Alright, we'll call to order the Policy Committee meeting of the Muhammad Seymour Board of Education. And I'm doing multiple things here, so.
We don't get 10:30 in the morning, we can relax a little.
And we'll just take a minutes and going through the agenda, so I'll do my best with that. The members of our Policy Committee are here.
Here?
Mrs. Farnes here, okay. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Is there any public comment this morning? Thank you. Any public comment? Before we dive into, we're already down to item number six on the agenda. Just an overview of the board committee format, I guess, whether it's this committee or findings or facilities. This committee makes non-binding recommendations to bring back to the whole board. So purposes for discussion, answering questions. If more information is needed, I can do that and then bring that back to the board Monday evening. So for the purposes of this meeting, we just be making recommendations about the policy updates and changes. And we're also going to hear from Mr. Keith for policy he's proposing. And then discussion about bringing that forward to the board Monday night.
Okay.
So again, non-binding, this group doesn't vote on anything, no possible discussion. And opportunity to go through some materials to get those to the entire board. So I thought what I would do is first of all, proceed in any way that you both want to proceed. But the first, or the next item on our agenda is the update from our policy subscription service. And thought I would just go through those changes, answering questions, discuss in any way. And then we'll decide on how I should work moving forward going to the full board on Monday night. So we should have in your folder there, there's a packet of those recommended updates or changes that have come through again from our policy subscription service. So I'll just start on the first page. And Policy 2:20, the only change is a legal reference. Same with Policy 4:100, insurance management.
Sorry, I just have a procedural question.
Sure.
So this is what press sends us, correct?
Yes. Well, now this sheet is a summary that Mrs. Farnes has together.
Okay. But this is from press?
Yes, yes, yes.
So this is not our policy. So how does, how do we get from this point into our policies and what does that look like?
Okay, great question. So the next step with this coming out of this committee then would be on Monday evening, the first reading of these policies by the full board. And then at the next board meeting, which would be July 15th, these would be an action item and more discussion can ensue at that point. Then depending on the action that the board takes, then we go into our online portal and make the changes in press and then it gets posted to our online web premises with our policies. So they get edited through the, actually it's the press plus online system.
Okay, so that's where we incorporate what we've customized as our policies.
Mm-hmm, we can.
With the press.
Yeah. And there's some, there's some different, there will be policies that come to us from press that have various questions to answer or various options. When you're changing just the legal reference, you know, that's.
Sure, no.
That's pretty minor.
No. I guess one of the things that is hard for me to follow just giving it in this form is one recommendation I would make moving forward is it would be nice to see for each of these that we're reviewing, reviewing our actual policy and how it integrates into.
Okay.
Because this is just, it's like reading a paragraph in the middle of something. So it's really hard to understand. So if we could.
So let me, what we can do is we can provide that for Monday night.
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah.
We did that contract.
It will be forward for this, for the Policy Committee meetings as well. So that feedback is very helpful.
I just feel like it was hard, I mean, I read through this whole thing, but it's like it's in a vacuum. Not understanding how it relates to our policy.
I love how we use the color when we did contracts, so you know, you could see the stricken and the new, you know.
Yeah.
That was nice too. Is that like this, Megan, is what I'm talking about, you know, like we use, you knew the records.
No, I understand, I understand.
So that helps me because it all blurs together.
No, I think without having it in context, it's just a little harder to understand what we're doing to our actual policy.
Sure.
And then it has notes in here and then I've seen in our policy, sometimes we keep the note. And I guess the other suggestion I would make is I think it makes it really hard for, just to read the policy and as a whole, it's a little bit confusing. Then you have references to outside amendments and outside legal precedent. So I was wondering if we could take a look at how we structure our policies and maybe have an appendix that has the policy number and then just pulls out all the notes and all the other legal references, just so it's a little bit more readable in its entirety.
Okay. I think what I'd like to do is just.
And I, I'm just, it's just a suggestion, I can make that Monday night if you want.
Well, sure, and I guess I also, it helps me just to act kind of, have them just literally show me, like.
Oh, sure.
Write this out. So yeah, I can work.
You can do that.
Whatever, whatever we can do. Okay. Okay, so the first two on this list, 2:20 and 4:100, both just legal reference changes. So those are the two changes there. The change to Policy 4:110 under transportation is a change that mandates if adequate public transportation is not available for student and walking would constitute a serious safety hazard due to typical reasons, but now they've added a course or pattern of criminal activity in there. So that's the change there. That may or may not impact us, but that's a change that just got made and actually got a lot of press on the channel pretty early that evening.
And on these things that don't necessarily impact us, we just put it in as a best practice or, because it, and the reason I ask is that it makes our policies pretty long and hard to follow. So I'm wondering what kind of tailoring we could do when some of these are not as applicable to our district?
In this, and so that's a question I can certainly consult and ask IASB about.
Okay.
My understanding of this, this is a new law. So policies, I think we would want it to reflect the law and I think we would have to also just consider, well, maybe it doesn't apply now, but I don't know about the future.
Sure.
Could be a really circumstance.
Megan, when I got on the, right before I got on the board, we talked about something like this though is interesting because I think about the context of the community, it doesn't, but like if you go down Prairie View Road after school, okay, and they drop off kids, it's crazy to me because some of the kids get dropped off and they go along the east side towards the mobile home community. But then some kids cross and that's kind of dangerous. You know, you'd think like if they could, if the bus had a route, it'd be safer to drop them so they didn't have to cross. So this has kind of come up in other contexts, even on a community just by the Mount Trachten on the.
Right.
And so, and I hadn't thought about it until someone said, I'm like, yeah, follow that bus. But then when I see the kids cross to those apartments on the west side, that's kind of dangerous, you know.
I'm not sure how this would, so are you saying that this would impact that?
No, but I mean, just those are, it's, I was just making a point that transportation has come up in the last year.
Oh, sure, no, absolutely. My question is just, some of these things come out and I understand legally, if it's the law, we certainly want it in there. But on some of these other things that are not as applicable to our district, would it behoove us to have a little bit more tailoring and a little more specificity just so that it feels like Muhammad Seymour and not like a legal document? And I think that will allow people to read it a little easier and everything that goes along with that. So it's just a question. This is my first meeting, so.
Oh, I, I should point out what has happened.
So the next one on the list, 4:150 adds the sentence and compliance with the tenure of life safety survey process required by the school code. I have to, that's not, we do that. That's not a change. I think it's just getting, I guess, more clearly delineated in this policy. So that's not something that all of a sudden we start doing. That's something that is mandated in the school code and so I don't know the history about why it ended up here, but the district likes that.
Okay.
And in the next policy, 4:960, that's also just a legal reference. Then we have, a legal reference change. Then we have a number of policies in Section 5. And those are simply language changes that change the language to say, please refer to the applicable collective bargaining agreements as opposed to naming our specific contract. And that, it makes sense, it doesn't change anything that we haven't done. In Policy 615, School Accountability, this is making reference to the five essential survey, which used to be an every other year survey and is now mandated that it's given every year. So this policy just reflects that change. It's not mandated that schools use the five essential survey. You can submit other client surveys to the state for approval if you want to use a different one. I won't publicly say that so we're not doing that. The five essential survey is a good measure of climate and it's used by the vast majority of schools in the state. So this is just saying that this is become an annual survey.
Correct. And when do we, so one of the questions I have is, so now we're going to, I mean, I don't see any reason why the board isn't going to pass this. This is just a policy, how do we move from policy into procedure? What's the next step for us to then say, now that we're doing this annually, where do we record? How we're doing it, when we do it, what we do with the results, everything that's process related after this policy is enacted?
So we, we are sent the information from the state about when the survey window ended.
Right.
And so the timeframe for administering the survey is dictated to schools. This year, interestingly, they kept extending the window. So I can remember sending out an email saying, hey, here's a deadline and then, oh, now we have some more time. So that's how we administer the survey. We communicate with parents about filling it out. We had a really great parent response rate in all four of our buildings this year. And then students 4th through 12th grade take it. They take it in school and then teachers take it as well. We generally give them some time and staff needs to take it. So I just got back preliminary results. They give you a little window of time to make any corrections. I'm not sure what that means. I don't know how you would correct, to be honest, and the survey.
Did you really mean it?
Yeah, I don't.
Who makes, sorry, who makes corrections, the?
You, they preliminarily send the principals the results. And I have to be honest, I'm not sure what is open for correction because I'm, you know, I'll hear the results.
You're asking people's opinions.
So then when those become finalized, they are made available to the public. And we'll also talk about when, there's a massive amount of data that comes back. And so I've talked with our principals about looking at that and looking through it and picking out areas where we need to grow and, but we literally just started picking out it. So that's kind of the follow-up.
Do we have a mechanism for getting that feedback back to our district? Like is that something that we then say, you can, as a parent, go and look at all of the results?
Yeah, yeah, the results are public.
Okay.
So since I've been here, my first year here was the off year that it wasn't given. So this year's been the first year that it's been given. And I personally am open to ideas about how to get the information out there and encourage people to look at the results. We will look at the results.
When we get the official.
At each of our buildings, our principals, so they come back building by building.
Okay. And then do they come and present that to the board or?
We can do that.
Okay. We don't, so what you're saying is we don't know yet?
We don't know yet.
That's a fair answer, I just didn't know. I haven't seen that feedback loop, so.
And I don't know that how it's been shared in the past.
Okay.
I'm very interested in sharing it and looking at what's going well and where areas of growth are needed. Also wanting to know.
Right, sure, okay. All right, thanks.
All public results, you got it.
FYI, just so you know, the union had asked too if it was still by annual, you know, every other year previously. And it was, and then it changed. So you know, that's something that people that are educators and teachers have asked about too. So this is a change for everybody and I think it's a good benchmark to be looking at.
Oh, sure.
So I was glad when they asked.
Yeah, I think annually is a good.
Yeah, I, that's the only, I mean, so many factors change when you do it every other year.
Sure.
Correct. Okay, then Policies 8:30, 8:110, and 5:155, again, just making that change to quote unquote, relevant, applicable collective bargaining agreements. Moving down to Policy 7190, this policy is kind of married to the actions law, medicinal cannabis policy, which we're going to talk about in just a second. But because our, because Policy 7190 in the past is the policy that discusses student behavior and prohibits drug use, we've got to make some changes in that policy that references, okay, we also have a policy allow, potentially allowing for use of medicinal cannabis. And so that's just the, that's the change that's made in 7190 so that we don't have policies that are in conflict with each other.
Right. Okay.
Then the last one on the sheet, that's almost the last one. Policy 4190. It is an optional policy targeted school violence prevention program. And at this time, I'm not, I'm not recommending that the board approve and adopt this policy because first of all, we've got systems and plans in place. We've got a very productive, positive working relationship with our first responders. We have a crisis plan in place. Of course, we do, we're doing all mandated drills. We have a threat assessment team in place. And so it's a great policy, but it requires a great deal of change and transition to very specific guidelines that are referenced in the policy. And I think that what we have is working very well. Anytime that we implement any part of our crisis plan, we do evaluate, we look at it, sit down with whoever was involved and whatever response it was and talk through what went well, other areas that we need to handle differently or grow or improve. So the other thing that I wanted to mention about Policy 4190, and it's somewhat related to Item 8 on the agenda, is that if the board were to adopt Policy 4190, then there's about 40 pages of administrative procedure that goes with it. And I mean, if we're talking about shortening things up, that's, I mean, that's.
I'm not necessarily shortening, but tailoring, I guess I should.
Threatening and specificity.
Right.
And so that's my recommendation. The board can take that or not take it and I can explain obviously that to the full board as well. But I don't, I just, I don't think it's necessary to have this.
That's fine. I think what, what the question I had is it would be nice to see the, like I mentioned when we first started, if I could see the policies that we, it's hard for me to say we don't need this when I can't compare it to the other policies. So it would be helpful to, for you to kind of put side by side, we don't need this, this is what we currently have.
Sure, sure.
So if we can do that, I think that would be helpful for me at least.
Yeah, I agree. So policy, this policy's actually brand new. It not, it's taking the place of, it's taking the place of 4:170.
Right.
So this is, it's much meatier than what's in our current policy book. But that's because it just, it really gets down to some specific stuff, but I.
And I think that's fine because I just want to be able to say, I feel like what's in our current policy book is sufficient and I feel okay by saying that I know that this is not mandatory. And I do feel like we've covered all of the areas that they've indicated we should at least be thinking about.
Sure. Then I believe that the last item on this packet is 710B, which is, it's an exhibit. So it would go next to Policy 710. And all it does is just list these different policies. It's an exhibit that lists more policies, but it kind of, it kind of brings together anything that's related to equal educational opportunities, civil rights, the health safety and general welfare of students within the district. So I mean, I think it's a valuable thing to have and be part of our policy. It doesn't change anything when we do it and says, hey, here's all these policies that kind of have, kind of address the same thing.
So it says it's not a complete list. How many of these specific policies listed are, that's the other question I have is. So it's not a complete list, they're not saying that this is the end-all-be-all. So this is also where it would be helpful for me to understand where our policies are specific and referenced, like equal educational opportunities, student social emotional development. What policies do we already have in place that, you know, to make sure that we're checking all these boxes? Or if there are boxes we don't think need to be checked?
Sure.
Then we can just move along, but.
Okay, so that's the, that's the packet.
Correct.
So then also included in the Press 100 update, we have a copy of this, is a draft update of 7:270, administering medicines to students. And so this policy provides updates related to not only medicinal cannabis, but also the school district supply of undesignedated epinephrine injectors, which we refer to as EpiPins. There's also language that you can see that we could adopt that is related to a school district supply of undesignedated asthma medication. We do not yet have that. Need a vacuum in our school nurses appealing to use it at. So we're potentially working on that, so we might need to revisit that and add the asthma piece in the future. So we do need to adopt the part regarding the undesignedated epinephrine inhibitors because we do have those. And then while the language related to medicinal cannabis, this board does not have to adopt a policy on that. It was our attorney's recommendation to have that. And since Prince Creya spoke in May, cannabis will be completely legal in the state January 1st. So I think that we could.
I didn't hear that.
Really?
For a certain page. I mean.
So I.
So her.
Her point was the environment's changing.
Right, but I mean, obviously we'll still have to have some sort of policy because they're not 21. So is her recommendation that we hold off until January 1st or?
No, her recommendation is that NIASBs is, we need to adopt this now. But then the other thing that happened in our legislative session just in this, that just ended at the end of May, was that there were updates made to Ashley's law. Don't have those yet, so we will expect future revisions to this policy probably in the fall. So in the meantime though, we've got to get this on the books, especially regarding the, so that would be my recommendation. So the piece about recreational marijuana, we voted to make legal. It just came under the umbrella of that the environment's, our business is changing.
Gotcha.
That medicinal cannabis is used by children on occasion and we shouldn't prepare for this.
We should. So if we move forward with, let's just take the asthma medication as one. I know we already have epinephrine injectors on site. One of the questions I have is this policy is one step. Where is the procedure and the process underneath this? I have some concerns about, so that's what, that's what you're going to update us on?
Yeah.
And then, okay, well, I guess I can wait till we get to that section to.
Oh, you don't want to talk about it.
So where, well, I'm just, I'm just wondering, as a parent.
Yeah.
I have a kid with asthma. I have a concern as a school board member as to making sure that people understand what our procedure is because I don't want anybody to assume.
Yeah.
Is this in every single school? What happens when it's been used once? Are they single-use containers? How do we dispose of it? So for me, this policy has a whole.
Oh, yeah.
You know, host of procedural things that needs to come underneath it. And I guess that's the piece that I haven't seen. And that's where I guess I have the concern is like, it's one thing to say we've got this policy and then when we put the policy out, you know, for the district to see, without the procedure underneath, I think there's some gaping holes and assumptions that could be made, especially in cases where it's life-saving, you know, medicines that I would like to figure out how we pair those two together. Because I don't think one, I think, don't think they're independent. I think they have to be together in order to be effective. So I'm just not sure, I was not sure where the procedure was underneath that and where we have that available and where we have those discussions about it.
Sure. So great questions. So part of that is in our administrative procedures project. So project, meaning it's not done. But we've had, I guess, what I would call language and procedures about administration of medication at school in our student parent handbook. So it's not, it's not nonexistent, but there, we're going to have administrative procedure that's linked to the board policies.
Okay, so given that, when we do this, if we do this on Monday, does the student handbook, is that going to be updated to reflect? Because I consider this a little bit different than an antibiotic and a little bit different than, you know, headache medication. So I feel like we should maybe call this out.
We can find out whether we can, because, and again, I keep referring to this pile of binders over here. We'll get to that in a few minutes, but it is relevant to the discussion. So, you know, we're not to the point of adopting asthma language yet. But in terms of the EpiPins, let me find out what, you know, where that language is. So the student handbook will be updated to reflect Ashley's law in regard to our discipline policy. You know, so this is the kind of thing that often parents would have a conversation with our school nurse about as well. So.
So when you said earlier, you said, you know, Lindsay, you're Lindsay. Nita is what? Uh, Nita is looking into that. What do you exactly need when she's looking into it?
Well, how, okay, so how, how to get them, so, um, she, she would need to speak specifically about like literally where these come from, how are they paid for, what?
Okay.
And questions like, I mean, I assume they're single-use. We're talking asthma, but, um, not being a nurse or another person in the room across that bridge, EpiPens are, um, single-use. Um, so when I say looking into it, just that, you know, having the opportunity to do it. And she's, she's in the process of, of, I guess, seeing the viability, the cost, how, how will we handle it?
So she's investigating the procedure in the process.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so these are, these are, these are optional.
And I'm sorry, did you say, I must have missed it. I thought we were recommending the asthma. No, we're not recommending.
No, we're recommending EpiPen.
EpiPen, okay.
So, so what would happen moving ahead, what this looks like is if on July fifteenth, the board said, yes, going to adopt, um, policy seven two seventy with medicinal cannabis language and undesignedated EpiPen language, then when policy gets updated through press plus, then we indicate, no, we are not adopting the piece about undesignedated inhalers. So that's, it indicates then to I S B, like we're, we're not taking that part of the policy. So, so subsequently will not be published.
Okay.
For us. So that's, that's the kind of fact channeling kind of process of that.
Okay. Um, could we highlight, is this what you're going to give to the board on Monday night, this same?
I'll do whatever you think's best.
I just would, I think if we highlight what we're saying no to in different color, then that would be helpful because I think it's, I don't want to give anybody the impression that we're, I know it's all listed under here under the same, um, you know, policy number, but I think we should be real clear about.
Agreed.
That we're not doing that.
Yeah, just EpiPens and marijuana.
Right. Well, and then. And then at what point would we come back around to? Because quite honestly, I think asthma's got the same potential as an EpiPen in terms of severity. So what is our process for circling back around to this? To say Nina's done enough, you know? At what point do we come back and say we either continue to feel like the asthma medication is not appropriate or we're going to incorporate that?
Well, let me, I just, I'll check with her on the topic.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I, my, my sense is she sees the need for it.
I would say she sees the need for it, you know, she's personally interested in it too.
Well, sure, I'm just wondering, you know, do we then keep this on our, um, agenda as old business? So that we don't forget about it as a board? Like what's the process for?
Um, I, I don't think we need to do that. I mean, I, I, I'll stay in contact with her knowing that, I mean, it's in the minutes that we're talking about it.
Right.
We'll prove the minutes, but, um, we won't let the ball drop. And Nina knows there's policy that's got to be adopted.
Okay.
So we knew that, so it would be a pretty easy paragraph, just insert in the picture.
All right.
So I will check in with her about inhalers.
And then under the medical marijuana thing, one of the things I was reading is that, one of the policies that said must immediately remove it from the school premises. And then in press it said immediately was not a word that was in there.
It's funny. Which like the spirit, this is my understanding of the, the, the spirit of that language and, and what. So let me back up one step and get to that question. Um, we, within, um, the, the medical cannabis language, there was the option for the board to approve a designated carryover for this that is not the parent. My recommendation is to not approve or adopt that language so that it is only the parent regarding, yeah, parent regarding, right, those terms are changed. That administers this. And so that's another, um, item that we would indicate depending on what the board approves in terms of what gets published. So my understanding is that what that looks like is a parent coming, administering, and leaving with the medication. It does, it doesn't get left at school. So that's, that's the use of immediate.
Okay. Um, I guess the things that, as you talked through that, are questions to me are, I don't want to be so narrowly, you know, for example, a lot of times cannabis and medical marijuana are used for seizure control. The parent is at work, they're a doctor, they're in surgery, can't make the timeframe. I don't want a policy that says they couldn't designate someone else to come. I would like to think through that process just a little bit to make sure that we haven't closed this so narrowly that we haven't thought about, you know, I mean, obviously we're not going to let their best buddy administer it to them. But I think there are times when language that is so narrow can get us into trouble. So, and that's why I think policy and procedure, like, we can talk about that procedurally. Leave this in language-wise and then procedurally have language that says, if you have a job that, you know, may pull you away, then you do have the ability to designate someone. And we have some language around what inappropriate designated person looks like.
I got it.
So.
I hear, I hear what you're saying.
Okay. Okay. And then maybe this is a question for Nita, but, um, like if we already have the EpiPens, I haven't seen anything about where the EpiPens are stored, their points are building, how many can have on site? And these are all questions that I would have, I mean, I need, I, I have need for an EpiPen. Um, so in terms of understanding, you know, again, I guess my question is, if someone could just point me to the procedures that we have? Um, because I would like to see if we can, as a policy committee, review those and make sure that they're, they provide enough detail so that parents in, and the board understand as we make changes to these policies, what does that look like in terms of actually making sure that the policy can be enforced, you know?
And I have been in buildings across the state where they're boxed like your A Ds and then there's even a sign or an arrow on the wall that says, you know, it's back way or whatever, so, you know.
Well, and, you know, do we have a policy that says we have a discussion? You know, part of the problem with an EpiPen is sometimes if you're the person in distress, you know, I'm in the cafeteria with two hundred other kids. Do we have discussions with our kids about what somebody in distress looks like? So that we have a community watching out for this? So for me.
Yeah, I might, I might know that you have.
Right, exactly. Kind of understand the process if the kid goes, you're acting weird. I mean, I was just in, this is a total tangent, but I was just in Vegas and then one clerk was cashing me out. And she looked at me and you could see like she just went glassy-eyed and like fell into the cash register. And I had to grab her to keep her from falling. So, you know, I kind of knew what, what was happening. I didn't know what was happening specifically to her, but I knew enough to grab her. So I think, you know, in the community of students, it would be nice to have these kinds of discussions and have procedures that say we take care of each other. We have kids who fall into certain categories, we don't have to help. You see this, this is your process for seeing if somebody needs to get help.
That's what I'll, I'll check.
So when I say procedures, that, a drill down is kind of what I haven't had a chance or an opportunity to see. And maybe we don't have that and maybe, maybe we'll decide as a board that that's too far down, but.
Well, no, I'm just sitting here thinking, I'd like to know that you have.
Yeah, right, I mean, I.
And I have these little people and I can pass out, don't call them, they'll, it's all coming.
Right, right.
But, um.
But I think, you know, in terms of how we as a community use this policy, which is in the best interest of making sure that our students stay safe and are taken care of, how do we enforce that in a way that makes the community responsible for doing that, so?
I should. Okay, I will, um, I will circle back with, with Nina and have some answers on Monday night.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Um, next on our agenda, we have proposed policy by, by. Let me just say.
Please, the rest can really quick.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Uh, we gotta go, we gotta go, no worries.
Can we have all the paperwork also, so?
Great.
And we have a current policy.
Great. Do I need to hit share? Is that in share right screen?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, you have the word there. And Jared is down the hall. Oh, and I don't get that login to press. I don't know if you, you said you were going to send it, do you want to send me that? Um, Jennifer has it, she'll be back to me.
Okay, thanks.
Have you logged into your I S B account yet to take any of your classes? Oh, okay.
That's the same account.
Is that what your I S B form? Oh, I was going to say there's a section there. I, I didn't even notice it until Dr. Hall told me about Monday, but there's one that says press login and that's, that gets you into the press account.
Okay, so yeah, really early in summer, so I have like coffee and water and coke.
So when I hit share.
Hey, I'm texting Jared.
Okay. I can wait.
He's right down the hall and it will do less for our expedition.
Oh, he's here, okay.
Yep, he's stuck, he's off. Hi, apologize about my mother-in-law's mother-in-law is on hospice right now.
I got it.
And he's texting me because his, oh, yeah, can you, see, can you, can you?
Uh, we don't even know. Uh, it was, it was my problem. I was fucking the wrong quarter line. Okay. So, okay, so today we're talking about, um, a proposal for board policy two colon two forty, uh, and it's entitled board policy development. And, um, before we begin, I want to just make sure that we all understand what our legal and policy basis is for defining our policies. So in our school code and in five slash ten dash twenty point five, it says the school board has the power to adopt and enforce all necessary rules for da-da-da-da. Um, and then within our own policy in two colon two twenty, or sorry, colon twenty, um, it defines the major powers of the school board. And number two of that is formulating, adopting, and modifying board policies at its sole discretion, subject only to mandatory collective bargaining agreements and state and federal law. So our current policy, um, it is, it's very, uh, clear for the, I assume you guys have reviewed it, um, but this is just kind of an outline of it.
We have a, we have a.
Great, so the first section is called policy development. And the three main pieces in there is it talks about how policy suggestions flow, um, from different sources. So from staff, it says it should flow through superintendent. And for all other sources, it should flow through the president or the superintendent. And then it declares some responsibilities that the superintendent has for the process of developing policy. Okay? That next section, and by the way, please stop me if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Uh, the, the next section talks about how policy is adopted and disseminated. And it says that policy must be, uh, changed over the course of two meetings. Um, so it's introduced at one meeting and then it's actually voted on in a subsequent meeting, um, except in the case of an emergency, special conditions, or legal compliance. Uh, it also says policies must be available for public inspection, that's, uh, required by law. And, um, so that's the, the, that's all of that section essentially. Uh, the next section, board policy review and monitoring, simply says that the board needs to periodically take a look at its policies. The next section is superintendent implementation. It talks about how the board will support, uh, any reasonable interpretation by the superintendent. And if there is a disagreement, the board will, um, serve its role in, in clarifying a policy um, by correcting the policy and not the interpretation. Uh, it also says in the absence of any policy, uh, the, the superintendent is authorized to act. Uh, and then the last section is, uh, suspension of policies. It says any policy can be suspended temporarily by a majority vote of the board. So this is the current state of the policy. This is our current enacted policy. Um, the policy that I'm proposing is on that form that says uni, uh, uni, I already forgot. Uniform policy change form, right. Um, and there are two, what I would consider two major changes. And then there are a handful of smaller changes, less consequential changes. So the first major change is what I call the, the policy development path. So currently, we, we have these three groups, staff, public, and board members. And they, the, the policy changes have to flow either through the superintendent or the board president, uh, as it is now. And the policy I'm proposing, um, I would say that everyone, um, should flow through, uh, uh, any board member. So a board member would then bring it to the entire board after they've, um, developed a policy that they're, they're proposing. Okay? Um, so this is one major change.
I have a question, do you want us to ask questions now or do you want to get all the way through?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, so my, and correct me if I'm wrong, okay? So you have suggestions should be made to any board member in your new policy update.
Mm-hmm.
But there's no superintendent in that.
Right.
Yeah, I don't agree with that, just so you know.
So, um, all it's saying is that, you, you gotta keep in mind that this is what is required for the process, or for the path to be. So it's not saying superintendent doesn't have a voice by any means. In fact, it, it lays out in the new policy, it lays out the same exact responsibilities, uh, yeah, the same exact responsibilities for the superintendent to consider the policies and provide information to us, uh, about the policy suggestion. All it's saying is if there's a staff member that has, um, a suggestion for our medicinal cannabis policy, they're not required to first go to Dr. Hall and then, um, Dr. Hall brings it to us. It would just simply allow them to develop the policy directly through us.
The reason I'm not in favor of it that way is that she has access to all of these buildings almost any point in time, this is her job and that's what we have paid her as our C E O to do. If we take her out of it, it concerns me because we don't easily access all the time. I mean, we're pretty accessible, but you know, we go to Las Vegas and I go to Michigan and we take time away. And she's on the hall all the time, we are not. So I think if we take her out of that, we cut, we cut the rope a little bit by making it shorter, by not having that access. That's just my opinion that I'll just put, because I, I know my things now.
So I understand what you're, I, I think I understand what you're saying. But again, I want to make it clear, it's not pulling her out of the process of developing policy. It's simply not requiring the staff to go through her and it's not requiring the public to either go through her or the board president. It allows anyone, including herself, to go through any individual board member. And while I agree.
Because you only have to find as that then, so then you're only going to board members when you want to make policy changes?
Well, there are seven of us.
Yeah, but, so here's my thing though. We've gone from having one to seven. If I were a person hired to a job and say I have an employer and I think I report to one person, what that looks like to me is now I report to seven. Contractually, when we, not for administrators, but when we got into the agreement for negotiating contracts, which I was part of two years ago, we have a structure where they reported to one. And now your suggestion, the way I look at it, and I also work in a district too, so I have that perception too, is that I am reporting to seven and that is not what I signed a contract for. So that's kind of where it comes from.
So it's not recording to seven, it's recording, first of all, it's not recording with anyone. It is engaging with any one of the seven. Um, you know, there are a lot of benefits to this. Consider, consider, um, if we had a male superintendent and we had an access to our president and there was an issue with, um, uh, sexual harassment of, of a female employee, they may feel more comfortable coming and speaking with a woman about that. And that would then give them the option. If you are restricting them to only certain people, then you're running into a problem with. and that would then give them the option. If you are restricting them to only certain people, then you're running into a problem with, you're, you're limiting their comfort level, is what I'm saying.
So, I'll say this for my excess though. Did you wanna say something? Just, I, my experience on the board is, say, Suzie in the corner calls me and says, I have a policy thing. I say, did you share that with Dr. Hall? Let Dr. Hall know. My experience also has been on the board. Dr. Hall will say, hey, I've had somebody come to me and say something about this, and we talked about it, you know? It's not like it just gets mixed, so. I, I, it's just, it's new, and it's not something I've done, which, that's probably why I, like, went through it. I was like, I just, I feel like you have a person in charge of disseminating that information, and the way that I perceive it is that maybe they're, like, we don't think that that will happen, so we wanna put this into place. That's just my perception of it.
Um, I guess my thought is every board member is just a person, and every board member has access to the community in different ways. This is simply bringing ideas forth.
It happens already now. I mean, you have surely had it happen.
You just said though, that when they bring it to you, and they're, they're bringing it to you 'cause they wanna talk to Lord Larson.
No, actually, that's not what they say though. I, 'cause I keep a log. You can ask Lindsay, she, I keep a paper log. They'll say, what should I do with this? Had this happened last night, I said, did you go to this person? Did you go to this person? Come back around to me, I keep trying that. Because it's just like, I don't get what I want from mom, I go to dad. It's better to, to give them the tools that they need to do and tell them to access that. I don't wanna police everything. I wanna hear what they say and push them the right way.
Let's, I'm just gonna, let's let Ken go through this presentation, and then, um, you get through it, and then let's.
Okay.
Let's, I just, I, I kinda just wanna, like, hear this, go through the big picture.
So, the next big change, um, is, uh, the creation of this, uh, policy change form, and, and, uh, you guys actually have this policy change proposal in that form, uh, so you can kinda get a feel for, uh, its use. The idea here is simply to have a, a uniform way to present this both to the board members and to the public.
One is great.
And it, uh, has a section that I really think is important, where you have to explicitly state the rationale for this change. Uh, and it allows us to create a record for policy changes, and the benefit there is our policies are gonna change in the future. It's a good idea for us to be able to look back on this policy and say, well, why did we, why did we take Dr. Hall out of the, um, the, the board development path? Okay? And it will be in that rationale, that discussion. Um, and, and so, those three purposes are, are why I'm suggesting this, this form. That's, that's a, a clear presentation for us. Uh, those are the fields that are in there, but certainly, if there's ones we think are not needed, or, uh, things you wanna add, that's, this is, this is certainly not set in stone. This is just initial idea. Okay, so then, these are the more minor changes. Uh, I've got five of them. So, um, in the current policy, it says that we can change a policy immediately under the three conditions of, uh, an emergency, um, something that's just defined as special conditions, or to be legally compliant. Um, I'm suggesting we change it to only allow for legal compliance, and make the emergency and special conditions allowed, but only by a unanimous vote of, uh, every board member. In my opinion, policy changes should be something that is intentionally done slowly and carefully. And really, the only thing that I think should be a, should get a, a pass for, we gotta get it done tonight, is to comply with the law. I think we should all be in agreement that there is really something special, there's really an emergency in, in effect in order to change a policy. This is something, uh, this is new, so this isn't replacing any text. This simply says that part of the use of this, uh, uh, policy change form is that, uh, when these forms are submitted, uh, one week prior to the meeting, then it will be included in the meeting's agenda, and it will be, that form will be included in the board packet that gets sent to the public. And again, this is so the, the public can really make use of the clear presentation of what policy the, is, is being discussed by the board. So, this is another new section. Uh, this isn't replacing any text. This is really just codifying some, uh, existing practices. We already have legal references and, uh, board policy cross-references for our policies. That's something that, uh, the press policies structured have always had, but this is basically putting in there that says we are required to put this, uh, these sections in there. It's basically codifying existing practice, practice. I am suggesting that we remove the section that talks about, uh, suspending policy. I believe that this runs contradictory to the purpose of written policy. The, uh, so, basically, I'm just saying, we shouldn't, I, I, I try to think of an example where we would want to be able to just set our policies aside for some instance. We could always exercise our emergency policy changing, um, eh, our emergency policy changing privileges, but to simply set aside our, um, policies, that, that strikes me as, as kind of dangerous and unnecessary. Um, and then, there are two exhibits, um, that are associated with the current policy. Uh, these exhibits are, um, the first one talks about how the, the board considers applies a, an ISB, IASB press update. And the second one talks about how we, um, consider and apply what are called local policies, which are basically policies that we develop. Uh, and I'm suggesting we remove these exhibits, um, largely because they're unnecessary, um, and there's actually a little bit of contradiction in, um, the policy in, in exhibit two. I looked into why that is. I think it's because the main policy is using an older version that's, that's on IASB site than in exhibit two, and that's why there's a, a conflict there. But, um, in essence, I think we just need to remove those two. Um, they're not needed anymore. And there's also quite a bit of, uh, mentions of IASB's, uh, proprietary policy structure that, in my opinion, doesn't belong in, in our, um, our district's policy. And that is all of the minor changes that, that I see. Any questions? And I've got.
Can you go, yeah, I just have one.
If you, I've got the, the new and the old, and a few other things if you want me to look at.
I know, um, could you just go, I think, Ken, it's just a couple slides back, and it was about the unanimous, is that?
Oh, yeah.
The unanimous vote.
Or policy adoption process. It's over there, I think, yeah.
Urgent policy changes, this one?
No, it's a couple more down about, um, needing a unanimous vote to suspend.
Yeah, that's this one.
Oh, okay.
In the, the green. Not to suspend, but to enact, um, an emergency or special condition policy.
My, my only, here, here would just be, I've been, I, you know, I'm just trying to think of, of different situations that could come up.
Yeah.
Is that, you, I don't, so I don't even have a specific example, other than you could be in a situation where a board member has to abstain because of, there could be a conflict of interest, and so that technically is not unanimous.
Yeah, very good point.
But just under, under, um, best practices or ethical reasons.
Yeah.
So, again, I'm not coming up in my mind.
No, I think you're, you're onto something.
So, um, just, uh, just a consideration for that. Um, the other, the other, other question I have was then, um, about, yeah, that's considered how to handle extensions. The, the, um, one about, if, if we, oh, okay, temporarily suspending. So, um, so I do have an example for this, and, and because we work with the public, and a, a lot of them, and a lot of kids, really unique things come up. Really unique. And, um, in the previous district I worked in, I won't go into detail, other than it was necessary to suspend the residency policy for a student because of, of a, a, an awful tragedy in their life, so, and, and so, what, the way I'm, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding that in order to do that, instead of just being able to temporarily suspend a policy, you'd have to introduce a whole new policy just for that situation.
Can you, I don't, can you legally make an exception for a single student?
In that situation, yes. And so, I mean, so, but that's just one example. I just, I, I, I think that, again, when you've got, and, you know, I guess in the big picture of things, we're a pretty large district in the state, but you just have a lot of things that come up that are really unique. And I think that, I, I, I'm in agreement with you that, like, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, we have these to follow them, but.
But your experience has put a question.
We, we work with families and kids, and, um, so, it, we don't have to really go down in the weeds with that, but just, uh, just think about it, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's a really good point.
We have really weird stuff that comes up, and it's not, we're different, unique, that sometimes it, it doesn't fit into the box.
Right.
In order to make the best decision for a kid. Might happen once every fifty years or something, so, again, I'm just, something's gonna evolve.
And that's the same thing about me, some kind of comments. Ken, I feel the same way, like, I'll make my comment, but if the majority of people decide to go and support something, I won't do that because I am on board with either of them.
Yeah.
I have a couple of other, other questions. So, that was my thing, is that, I don't, I had one, my thing. Can I go down and, like, tell you where I am, or, 'cause you've gone through, okay, so.
You're in the, yeah.
I'm on this, so I'm on your, your thing, so I, I already addressed my first question with you. Again, the second paragraph of where it says policy development.
Yeah.
I thought it was a little bit contradictory when I read it. I, I had, in my mind, I scratched out three, because I put, take out that and three, having policy suggestions drafted into written form using a new PCF of board deliberation requested, 'cause it kinda contradicts. I think this is a awesome idea. It defines it, makes it clear, so I have that as a comment, 'cause I thought it was contradictory. Then if I go down to the policy.
So, sorry, wait, I don't understand. What, what's contradictory?
So, well, you have, um, the superintendent is responsible for providing all that policy information dated with the board, notifying those who will implement or be affected by a required to implement a proposed policy and obtaining your advice and suggestions. And then you have that form in there, so like, you already know that, like, 'cause you defined it, you'll use the form, so I just thought it was contradictory. Like, you already defined the process.
Three or redundant?
Yeah, redundant, I'm sorry.
Redundant, okay, so the, the point of three was, so the, the, this.
You used the wrong words, sorry.
This, that's okay, this section is supposed to be, a- and this is very closely to what is existing and what is in ISB's, uh, recommendation, but, um.
I saw, I, I said, I said, they don't make it out.
Yeah, it's, it's supposed to define clearly what superintendent's role is in the, the, uh, policy development. And number three was intended to basically say that the, if, if a board member would like help putting it into, uh, putting it into the form, and also putting it into language that is sound policy language, um, then that would be a, a responsibility that the superintendent could assist that board member with.
Okay.
Um, but that's why I said it has requested by board members, because it may not be.
My next question is the second paragraph of policy adoption process, and it was the voting thing. I, I'm, I am not in favor of unanimous. I have three fours, two thirds, and then I said, instead of vote of every currently elected or appointed board member, just the people present, the people that are present up here are the present board members. And I guess maybe, I mean, so that's, I thought that was, like, clearly defined, but like, present is two, they're here. Um, and then I thought you could take out the substantive changes, um, because you've already kinda set that above. And then I didn't have any other comments until the rationale part.
So, the high, the, the substantive changes paragraph, the, the one I just highlighted, I, I wanted to keep that, uh, or I wanted to state that so that, again, I, I believe that policy development should be a slow process, and what I didn't want to have happen is someone put forth a policy change proposal at, at meeting in January, and then, after the discussion in January, they make dramatic changes to the policy. They bring it back, uh, in February and say, okay, this is the second reading, let's vote on it. I wanted to start fresh at that February meeting because you've made significant changes. You're basically presenting.
It's a new version, new version, I say, a new version, I gotcha.
But I did wanna have something in there that says, if you make minor changes, if you correct typos or, or names or whatever, then, then you won't have to start.
It might be quicker than the Senate, 'cause they read it twice and go a third time. Okay, and then my ne- last part is on your rationale page.
Yeah.
Uh, well, that same, the bullet point, new policy limited the ability of the board to change policy quickly unless all boards, and that's where I took out the word all, and we would define whether it's three fours or two thirds. I just don't, I'm not for unanimous.
Okay.
Um, and kinda that same way, I have been on board when we had some unanimous things. And then down at the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, ninth bullet point, the new policy removes, mentioned that the board will periodically review and revise existing policy. Uh, you says this text was ob- obvious and unnecessary. I didn't think it was not obvious. I thought we should keep it the way that it was, as well as the next one too.
Does, does that refer to, just to any, like, generally any policy?
Yeah, it's just, so in the existing policy, um, the existing policy, it says.
Board review.
Yes, it, it just says the board will periodically review its policies for relevancy, monitor its policies for effectiveness, and consider whether any modifications are required. I'm okay with that.
We do get five year up, um, updates from press.
Five of them, yeah.
Which is just kind of like them saying to us, hey, is it still, um, you still need none of this? Do you still follow it? Just kind of, the authority doesn't require any action other than to say, yep, let's do it, you can, or no, revise it, or that kind of.
Then my next question is that next bullet. It, it says, the new, it reads, the new policy removes language authorizing the superintendent to act in absent of relevant policy. This language was vague and unnecessary. I said to keep it, 'cause if there's no policy, we should authorize for her to act. How are we gonna convene and make a policy? You know, just like she said.
So, I guess this would be.
She or he or whomever, the superintendent.
An interesting question for, um, the attorney, but I, I, I believe that as superintendent, she is authorized to act as it stands. I, I just didn't know, I, I, I didn't see the purpose of that text. I think, if you pull that text out, I think she still has the same authority to act in the absence of policy.
That's all the questions, I guess. So, my biggest ones were really the, the number and vote unanimous or whatever.
Yeah.
I, instead of, instead of president, whatever, only people that can vote in here are present board members.
Do you think, what if it said unanimous vote? What if it just took out for people that had to abstain, but it's still required and it'd be unanimous vote? Here's, here, what I'm, what I'm concerned about is, well, I guess, I, I, I'm, what I'm concerned about is, um, if the right four people that wanna make some kind of dramatic change to the policies show up at board meeting, they could theoretically run it through the, the network, same meeting.
I know, I mean, the right four people.
So, if you, if you change it to say that, um, you require unanimous vote of the board members that are present at the meeting, then if there are theoretically four board members that wanna make some dramatic change, they could theoretically call a meeting when there is, um, uh, the other three members aren't gonna be out of town, let's say, and they could at that single meeting make a dramatic change.
So, then we take unanimous out, and we put three fours or two thirds of the members present then. I just, I mean, that's such an undermining thought in my mind to think that that would happen, so, right?
I, I agree with you, but who knows what's gonna be on the side there.
So, then I, I, I move, my suggestion, and this isn't, we're just talking about, is we take out unanimous and we put what I said, either three fours or two thirds, vote at the present people, present board members.
And that is so. You probably know this, Robert's Rules has some.
Robert's Rule says that if someone abstains from a vote, they are not considered to be voting, and the, uh, majority, two thirds, three fours, or whatever, only counts for people who vote. So, if you abstain, you're not counted.
You're not counted when that's six. And that's just a guideline to follow, so.
I think it's.
We can put whatever we want, so, that's the way I read it even in the letter from, uh, Miller, right, Miller Tracy Bucker.
I, I need to check it on policy. I think our policy says extensions count as notes. So, let, let me look into it though, but I think, I mean, usually.
The Robert's rules says they don't count.
Right, the policy, our policy is trumped Robert's rules.
No, I understand. I was, that's what Robert's rules says.
Thanks for answering that.
It's certainly something we can address in the text by saying abstentions are, are, abstentions are not considered. I mean, that's what I said right there. But, but, let, let me think about it and, and come up with a solution.
I'm going to say something off the, what'd you say earlier, it was really cute, you said off a tangent or off the cuff, but like, I think as you get to work with everyone over the next couple of months, you won't feel that way, cause I, now that you said that, like, with right four, I'm like, right, maybe C D, so I just.
I'm not worried about it with current board. I'm just, I wanted to make the two major changes, and I thought while we're changing this, let's look at all the other issues that are possible here. Um, and I mean, I, I also looked at the new version of the two forty, uh, that IASB, um, suggests, so, um, yeah.
That's all the questions or comments I had. I, one other comment I had though, I don't know that it relates necessarily to you or whatever, but this was in the packet. You know, it said board consideration, date of meeting when policy was first presented. This is just the exhibit, right? Okay, cause like, well, the thing is, is cause it had a date on it. I was like, I went back through my minutes, I'm like, I remember that. That was the shortest meeting we ever had, cause we were doing the texting. Okay, just when it had the date on it.
That'll be right for the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Oh, okay, now I get it, okay.
Yeah, she's talking about.
Which was good, cause I went back through my minutes, I'm like, I don't remember that.
She's talking about.
Like, we did? Thank you for putting that together and making it pretty too, I think.
Thank you.
So, sorry, I have an idea.
Go ahead.
So, um, so, you're asking that this be added to the agenda for Monday for discussion in the first round? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and do you anticipate making any changes based on comments that are made today?
Oh, yeah.
Um, I guess one of the comments that I would have is if, if this is being interpreted that the superintendent, I'm just, and I'm just doing language.
Can you say where you are, maybe, so I can follow up where you are?
Um, well, I'm, I'm trying to follow, cause I don't have your notes, so I was trying to remember where you were saying that you felt like.
What, look at play?
No, it's under the policy development. Anyone may suggest new policies, um, should be made to any board member. If we, if we change the language to say can be made to any board member, here's the problem. I, I think I understand what you're trying to do. And I completely agree with the idea that if you have a funnel for communication that is too narrow, you have the opportunity to miss really good ideas and really good opportunities to communicate and engage with, with the community. And if you have to funnel everything through a very narrow pathway, then people who aren't as comfortable, for whatever reason, that we can't say is true or false, it's their reason, they have more comfort coming to a certain person than another. I don't know that we want to shut down that idea, that discussion, that thought. So, expanding the funnel is not expanding the policy. It is expanding the way that we get ideas and mechanisms for reviewing policy, making sure policy is in check, making sure that policy is comprehensive enough to cover what's going on in the community. And so, for me, I completely agree with expanding the funnel. Um, on other boards.
I have any board member or the superintendent. I'm afraid maybe that got messaged or bit. I, we had taken the superintendent out. I, you can still have the others, but we've taken her all the way out. I haven't had any board member or the superintendent.
Okay.
So, that's six plus one is seven.
I don't have any problem with, with, with that.
I just didn't have the superintendent, not ten.
I'm okay with that.
I don't have any problem with that. I just know that there is language in our current policy that has given me pause based on some of the other boards that I sit on, where you can only go through the board president. I am chairman of the board as you know, as you probably know. And I don't hold any power outside of any other board member. Because I am president, I am responsible for, uh, making sure that the meeting agendas flow and that the meetings flow appropriately. I don't have a stranglehold on how communication gets flowed to other people, other board members, our district attorney, you know, all of those things. All board members have equal access and equal say when it comes to ideas for proposing policy changes. And so, we have some language here that has given me pause, because it seems to indicate that either the superintendent or the board president are the only ways.
But that's not what I'm looking at here. I was just saying, I'm just superintendent. It says any board member or the superintendent.
So, so you're saying, Lori, that, that.
It doesn't say board president here though, so that's where I, cause I get that.
Right, no, I guess what I'm saying is, I think what Ken is trying to do is say before, we have a very narrow funnel. Because the current policy is very specific about the board president or the superintendent being the only avenue. So, what I am saying is, I do think that this policy and funnel expansion is important for all the reasons that I stated. And so, if you need superintendent to be on there, I think that that's just a broader place for the funnel to be. I'm also saying there are other areas in our policy where it is very specific about one or two people being, I'm gonna call them the gatekeepers, to information and information flow. And that is contrary to what I have experienced on other boards. And I feel like that is another area in terms of policy that we need to take a look at, because one person cannot speak for the board. The board is, you know, we all know the rules, that the board acts as a whole. But we have policies enacted that seem to drive information collection and gathering and dissemination through a very narrow funnel. And this is one instance of that. So, I'm just saying, I agree with the idea that the scope of this funnel across all of our policies needs to be broadened.
I do, I do too. When we went old, I didn't go back to change anything. I didn't ask to go back to a super.
I wasn't suggesting that. My point was, I don't think this is the only place that we do this. I think to Ken's point of wanting to broaden the funnel, I think that there are some real good reasons. And if we need to add superintendent back in there, just from a language perspective to make that clear, I don't have any problem with that, because I think it's very clear in the second paragraph, the superintendent has to play a vital role, because it's that, it's, it's Lindsay's job. I mean, I can write policy, but we have to make sure it's in line with the language and how the rest of the policies work as a whole. So, we certainly couldn't cut out the superintendent. Um, but in terms of funneling that information, uh, I agree with the expansion of the, of the funnel.
So, Lori, are you comfortable with policies flowing through the seven board members?
I, I, I have to, my only thing I had, when, like, that's where I said I feel bad, cause it'd be better if you could just say this. So, suggestions should be made to any board member or the superintendent.
Okay.
Whereas the original one said, you know, just leave it, wipe it out, or president or the superintendent. I'd rather expand that way, but I, I don't want to eliminate, and you can say it's redundant, it's in there better. I don't wanna take that out. We're cleaning things up.
No, I don't think that would be redundant.
My biggest issues were that one and then that unanimous thing, it's a tricky thing.
Well, I think that calls to question the problem with the entire board, which is what is the purpose of policy? And policy is not something that's supposed to be changed on a dime. Policy is a bedrock policy. We don't make policy for, you know, the five percent, the one percent, the exceptions.
Yes.
So, I think the understanding of, um, what it takes to actually change a policy, it should be a very big deal.
It is, unlike this form, it's great.
Um, and I do like the history, and I think history tells us lots of things. So, the fact that we then track, uh, why we do things and why decisions were made, because you're, you may wanna come and undo a decision that was made previously.
Sure.
But without the understanding of why, why that action was taken, it's harder to do that. It's a vacuum, it's unnecessary. So, I, I like all of this too. Um, so I guess, you know, if you're asking, I just wanted to be sure what you were asking in terms of the next steps for this, this policy.
So, you're gonna make some revisions, and then, um, I think the power point is super helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Is there anything I should add to the power point? Anything? That would be just.
I can't think of anything.
Okay.
I mean, I, I would add, do we need to have a discussion about what is the appropriate vote to do something that is of this magnitude of policy change? What is the number that this district is comfortable with? And then we can think through, you know, abstentions and exceptions and people on vacation. And quite honestly, like, policy is not something that should, like you said, it should change at a glacial pace. You just wait until a board meeting where all the members are present. Cause you need to make a policy change, unless it's in, in an emergency. Because quite frankly, our policies should have enough detail and enough process and procedure behind them to take care of most exceptions. And if they don't, then that's the work that needs to be done in addition to this.
Right.
Great. Um, yeah, so I'll make some changes and send it off to you guys, uh, by tomorrow morning, dark call. Uh, so that I can give the board packet any time.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Is that gonna be, is that gonna be on time?
Yeah, I need it in the morning.
And are you planning on doing this power point at?
Yeah, I'll do the same thing.
I think this is helpful. I was just gonna say that, I think that's great.
So, um, you have your agenda item on there.
Great, thank you. All right.
That's strong work. No, I think this is a really good start, and I think.
Visual bait. Visuals helped a lot. All right, no worries. Um, do you have any other thing on the agenda? I just wanted to, oh, we're not having a close.
Do you?
I'm just.
Sorry.
Uh, I just wanted to provide a quick overview of the administrative procedures, um, project that has been, um, going on in the background. Um, so, um, we've, kind of the next level underneath board policy that the guys, and the daily operations of the district and the various procedures that administrators generally use, and, and, um, could definitely be extended to other staff members as well. Um, that, that level is called administrative procedures. And we've, um, we have procedures in place, and they're kind of, they're in different places, and, um, I don't know that we've, in, in my experience, since I was here, come across a situation where it's been like, oh, like, oh, there's, we've been absent a procedure, how do we handle that? Um, so, we've, we've had, um, you know, district, um, student parent handbooks. Those can be considered procedures that are shared with our families and students. Um, there's staff handbooks that are specific to the staffs of, of each building. Obviously, we have forums, and then our board policy guides, some of these we do. But really, you know, board policy is the big picture overarching. Um, so, um, having come from a district that does have, um, a formalized set of administrative procedures, um, last fall, I talked with the board about engaging with IASB to develop an administrative procedures manual. And, um, it's, it's, it's a long process. Um, but what it will end up looking like when it's concluded, and I feel like it's like the end of the time, is that the administrative procedures manual will have eight sections that mirror the board policy manual. But there is, it's the, it's the, um, it's the operational part of what the district does. And so, um, this, this is what it looks like now. Uh, so how the process started is, um, IASB shares with us, um, a draft manual of administrative procedures. And then, when I say we, I mean mostly Trent, Nicole, Christine, and I, with input of some other various people who might be impacted, like our director of transportation as an example, um, have just been going through, looking at the samples. Most of them are, are relevant, and they, they already reflect what we do. Um, there are some, um, I guess, more unique localized ones that, that we would, um, edit or write and say, this is how we do it in the HOMIC C R. So, when this is, um, when this is finished, we will have an administrative procedures manual. Um, it is not public. Um, it's, it's something that, it's not out on our home site. Now, certain parts of it appear in other places. For instance, certain parts of the administrative procedures manual would show up in the district's student parent handbook, or it would show up in, maybe not on the website, or on, cause not everything in here is relevant to everybody. And frankly, there's some, there are some safety and, and items in here that shouldn't be public. Um, so, that's the main, that's the main overview. Um, we're, and so the other, the other piece of this is as, um, board policy gets updated, uh, then the trickle down effect is then, um, this also gets updated. So, it's kept current. We stay on, on top of it as we get updates from press. Um, or if there's new policy, you know, just by board members, we wanna make sure that it's aligned to administrative procedure. So, um, hopefully, it'll.
It's exciting, actually.
Um, just how, you know, not for them, but you know that, but if you look at it, it's a race they've been running, and they're making progress on it. No, it's, it, it, I will be, um, I'll be glad when it's, um, these are not sparingly in the face anymore. But it's, it's been absolutely good to go through and review and just talk about, okay, does this reflect what we do? Are there things we need to do differently or better? Are there things in here that we don't, I mean, there's, you get this whole draft manual, there's some things you don't need as well.
Did we have to pay the IASB for that, or is that?
Yeah, when it comes to their legal services.
Okay. Do we, do you remember how much we?
Uh, I think it was around seven thousand dollars.
Um, do you have sense of what you're, like, are you sixty percent done, like?
Oh, um, no, I put it more between eighty and ninety.
Okay.
So, getting there for sure. So, it's been, it's been a, it's, not only from the standpoint of, okay, there's gonna, like, there'll be a product, literally, feel good about that. It's just been good to go through and review, um, review everything. And then that has also, I mean, naturally invoked some discussion about board policy as well.
Policy is only as good as your procedures.
Yeah, yeah.
It really is. That's right. So, um, okay, and then, at what, do you have in, a thought of, is that going to, you said some of it's non-republican, some of it, will you present it to the board when it's done? Will we have an opportunity to go through it? How, what's the involvement of the board, given that our policies kind of, you know, how, how do we do that double check of policy and procedure?
Well, I mean, I, the board can look at it typically, I mean, it's not for board use from the standpoint that it's day to day operations of, of the district. So, I, we can talk about how that best looks. It's, I mean, it's not, um, it's just, it's, I guess it's kind of the, from the standpoint that the board doesn't, I mean, I know we approved the district's student parent handbook, but, I mean, that's, that's a couple notches below board work, so this is kind of.
Well, except that the policy is what dictates the procedure. So, procedure is only something that you can enact based on what the policy, so it's, it's, it can't, you can't really separate ones without the others. I mean, that gives you the detail and the how to, but I think I would at least like the, and you sent it to me, so, um, I would like the opportunity for the board to be able to just look at it and make sure that we've done a double check with the policies and that we have that, you know, turnkey approach that we're hoping for.
So, it's not an approval item though for the board?
Right, no.
But it will guide us in our policy development.
Correct.
Because if we see that it's a procedure that we think is not interpretation we intended by our policy, then you can redraft our policy.
Right.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get it done first.
Sure, sure. Well, and, you know, it's, it's five hundred pages long, so.
I'm hoping this is.
Not the easiest read. I'm hoping it's not too. Okay, so, in terms of this, I know you said that this, um, committee, thank you. Committee only meets a couple of times a year. What's, what are the next steps for this committee?
Um, typically, the committee is met when we get updates from press. And so, that's three times a year. Um, we should, uh, I'm gonna say, within the next three months, get an update that is, I believe, will be reflected at the spring legislative session. Um, so, but I would say that if there are policies that get introduced outside of that cycle, then we can convene. So, that, that I'm open to suggestions, or that that was kind of just been done in the past, but if it's anticipated that other policies would be like today. Like, say we didn't have a press one hundred update, but Ken just can't present, and those don't have.
Okay.
So, okay. All right. No closed session, so if we're ready to adjourn, I'll take a motion.
So, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I don't think we need one, but yes, I think, I think we're done. I was just, yes, but yeah, I'm pretty sure, right? I don't know. Yeah, second and, uh, right. I don't ask for a second.